At 111 East Maple Avenue. The first item on the agenda will be the discussion of Resolution 22-765, a resolution creating a Charter Review Commission for the City of Independence. And with that, shall I open it to discussion? There we go, open it for discussion. Members of the council, please proceed if you have any questions, comments, concerns, issues.
Mr. Mayor.
Can we edit that out? No worries, my friend. Excellent. Councilman, I see you leaning forward like you have a question or...
I do. I just had some points I wanted to bring up.
Is your microphone on?
I don't know.
There you are. Yep, thank you.
It's a different microphone or something. Something's different about it. So I know it was brought up during the last city council meeting about the... there was some discussion about the former city council members and former employees being excluded. I did bring this up when we originally talked about this and said I disagreed with that. You know, they're citizens just like anybody else, so I don't really understand why we're excluding them. And I would actually like that to be changed. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is something that was kind of brought to my attention over the weekend is what's our plan if somebody... if we go through this entire nominating process and we appoint them and then they decide, I don't know, six months into this thing or a month into this thing, they just really don't want to do it. So we have some kind of plan in place, how those appointments will take place.
I was thinking I would just ask you for recommendations and we'd pick your choices.
You know what? I don't really know. I'm just kind of throwing it out there. The person that suggested it to me suggested that we do some alternates. At first I was kind of like, okay, that may be a good idea, but then after I started thinking about it, I was like, I don't know if somebody would just want to sit there and not participate and just listen for, you know, for six months and not be able to vote or... I don't know. Just at first I was like, yeah, that's maybe a good idea, but then, I don't know. I wouldn't want to just sit there and listen and not participate, you know? So I don't know. I don't know the best course of action on it. But I just, if we have to reappoint somebody, I just don't want it to be a long tedious process if somebody leaves.
What was your last statement I didn't hear? I'm sorry.
I just don't want it to be a long tedious process if we have to reappoint somebody if somebody decides to leave.
Well, that's why I said if it's good with the rest of the members of the council, we'll just have you select.
Oh, well, okay. I'm good with that. I'm sorry, I misunderstood the first time.
Wouldn't we just go back to the same, you know, person or process that we went through for that particular position? That would seem to be the most logical thing in my book, my thoughts at least. I don't know.
So, Councilmember Stewart, I'm hearing you say you'd like to consider some kind of, what did you call it, nomination process for...
Well, I mean, if we go back, I mean, if we go back to the original process, that's fine. I mean, if my pick would leave, I guess we go back and just do it the same way over again. But the other thing I mentioned, I would really like to allow former employees and city council members allowed on this committee as well.
Okay. Anyone else further discussion on this issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Proceed.
I too, I have concerns about in Section 2, that last sentence that says because it's imperative that the commission is able to be detached, objective, and impartial, any former city, any former independent mayor, city council member, or city independent employee shall be ineligible to serve on the commission. And I just, I, you know, we have many, I think there's probably 300-plus retired city workers living in our city, and I'm grateful that they chose to stay in our city. But I wonder what kind of message we're sending to them when we say that we don't trust you to be detached, objective, or impartial. In fact, I think just the opposite. I think they come in informed, they have some backgrounds, they have knowledge of how the city works, what was good, what wasn't, maybe some of the issues that made their jobs difficult that they could help us to improve upon. So I would like to see that language removed. I think that they do have the ability to serve on this commission objectively. And then the other component that I'd like to see is that we have run through the numbers, all the numbers, how many could serve potentially in this district, that district, and it could be that we could have an overload of a district. And so I was wondering if there was any way that we could just have some kind of language that says no more than two in each district minus the chair. Wherever the chair's district that serves, we won't necessarily count the chair as one of the two in the district. But that gives every district two people represented and a total of nine.
Sorry, I'm just writing down your ideas and then...
No, that's fine.
...contemplating. Thank you. Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I think we asked city manager to research best practices on this. I'm going to ask Mr. Walker, was that last sentence in Section 2 for, you know, excluding prior mayors, councilpersons, or employees, was that part of that, your findings in that as best practices or...
The, one of the documents that I looked at was from the National Civic League, which we've discussed that organization a few times. They're the ones that prepare the model city charter each year, and they had some different suggestions and guidelines. They did not specifically mention those individuals who would represent former staff or council, but stated that it was important to try to get a broad cross-representation of people across the city and to try to engage those residents who have maybe been underrepresented or not participated in the local governmental process as much before. You know, we're very fortunate to have a strong number of citizen volunteers who step up to serve, but I know, you know, sometimes it's a challenge and you find yourself asking the same folks to fill different slots. And their advice was to try to avoid that for this Charter Commission, to try to identify people who haven't traditionally been a part of that, whether it's serving on a board or commission or something of that nature. But didn't specifically cite a staff or an elected official or anything like that.
Anyone else, other comments on the Charter?
Mr. Mayor.
Proceed.
For years and years and years and decades and decades, this city's been run by folks that don't sit on the council. And as much as it would be nice to have the experience of folks that have worked in the city or are still active in local politics, we have an absolute surplus of talented, smart, knowledgeable folks that would be a great fit on this council, people that work as clerks and lawyers and, you know, schoolteachers and every job you can think of that'll be perfectly good fit for this council. In fact, I don't know why we would want folks that have worked at the city for a long time because we're not really in very good shape. So I'm looking forward to folks that aren't normally involved. I'm looking forward to new ideas. I'm looking forward to folks that have experience in other cities that can bring new ideas. If we're going to review the Charter, we might as well actually review it as opposed to doing everything we can to fight to keep it the same. There will be no point to that. So when this comes up, I will vote for the item exactly as it is.
Anyone else, other comments? Proceed.
I would add a caveat with our retirees, elected officials, maybe a 24-month period that they're not allowed to be picked for their names to be put forth for nomination discussion in the committee. I think that would be a good compromise.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, if a member has been gone five years, they would be past your 24-month window if I'm hearing you correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand your perspective. Thank you.
Um...
Proceed.
You said 24 months?
Yeah, give or take.
So that'd be two years. You said five.
No, I would say someone who was in a five-year, someone who had left the city five years ago would fall outside that window.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
No worries.
So, you know, I actually kind of agree with that. I know a couple of places in the Charter it mentions, like a city, former city council member can't become the city manager for two years. And I believe there's one other thing in there that talks about two years or something with former city council members. So I could probably go with that, and I think I'd be all right with something like that.
Mr. Mayor.
Proceed.
I'd like to know why it's so important that we have a former employer, former city council members on this commission.
Well, I don't think it's necessarily important, but I think it, I don't think they should be excluded. I mean, to be quite honest, I have a, my next door neighbor, he's been retired from the city for 10 years, you know? I don't know if I would appoint or nominate him or not, but I mean, I think I should have that option if I wanted to. I mean, he is a citizen of this community. He's lived here in the city for 50 years, you know? He retired from here, you know? I just, that's the way I feel about it.
Mr. Mayor.
Proceed.
So, you know, I have some mixed emotions on this particular issue, primarily because, you know, while I think that, you know, there would be some value to having, you know, prior employees or prior elected officials on there, you know, I think that there's also the possibility that they have agendas that are stronger or axes to grind or whatever about the Charter. And so, you know, I'm kind of of the general opinion that we have enough quality people in our community that could serve and provide the level of experience. There will be multiple opportunities for citizens, any citizens, including, you know, retired employees or other elected officials to have input. And so there will be lots of opportunity for input. So I'm inclined to try to keep any, you know, unintended agendas out of the mix.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, proceed.
Just one more point.
Sure.
I believe there are two members of the city council that are former city employees. So I would just be curious if they weren't on this body and they wanted to be on that committee, how would they feel about being excluded?
I think they should run for office and get elected.
I'll second that motion.
We don't have a motion on the floor. Very good. Any other further comments or discussions?
One more, Mr. Mayor, that...
Please proceed.
I've been asked this by a couple of people, not, I'm not going to say a lot, but just a few people that are asking why we wouldn't allow the seventh seat to be filled and allow that elected official incoming to be able to appoint or have input as to who they believe would fairly represent the Charter Review. My second thing is, I would like to, since we're being asked why we want or why we think retirees or former city councilor or mayor to be on, what would be the great objection? I'd like to hear what the objection is to...
Well, I just told you. And so did Mr. Fears. The folks that have been retired often are part of organizations or have certain agendas within the city, and why would you not have somebody as free from other interests as you could? Additionally, you have folks that have been used to doing it. No offense to Mr. Stewart's neighbor, but very likely that person lived here when we had brand-new power plants and we're growing at 10,000 people a year and, I mean, times have changed. We need a new, modern Charter for the next generation. We don't need more of the same Charter that we've had.
And if I'm correct, any other comments? Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, so being 60, I'm not, I'm just, it sounded a little ageist to say that, that somehow people that are older don't have valid inputs as to what we would like to see in our city. I mean, would you, are you going to give us a cutoff of age? We have, we have city employees sitting on committees. We have former council members sitting on committees. Are we going to do this across the board? Are we going to say that they can't fairly represent it? You're too old. I'm a little taken by that.
So... That's not what I heard at all. What I heard is it would be great, if a football analogy, to have fans who are not owners of the teams or people who worked for the NFL to make some suggestions on how the NFL rules should be changed. I think it'd make the game fun. Also, this is what my point is, is I want this truly to be a citizen commission. I do not want it to be owners of the NFL teams to do that. I want it to be a truly citizen commission. And in order to have a citizen's commission, if we, if we, if we pick, if that's the driving force here and we pick the majority of the folks that have been retirees or employees of the city, then what is a citizen going to say about the process? They're going to say it's not truly a citizen-driven process. We need to have a citizen-driven process, not by a situation of just insiders who have been involved with the city for years. Are their ideas valid? Yes. Will we have open meetings? No question. Will those open meetings, will, if someone wants to contact any of us up here and those people on their Charter Commission, would they be willing to have those ideas? Absolutely. Have people reached out to me in the last few times and said, I'd like to chat? And if people have reached out to me and we have talked, people have reached out to me and said, could we chat? Absolutely. And I do chat. But my goal is, if it's the will of the commission, of the body here, to make this open for people who have, you know, been employees and been retirees and been, and been people who, who are inside baseball players, then that's fine. But my goal as mayor is to truly be inviting to citizens who may have been excluded because they felt like there wasn't a level playing field for them to be involved with it. And those people who are in fact retirees or city employees, do they know the people on the committee? Sure they will. Will they be able to share their points of view? Absolutely. And I certainly want it to be a citizen-driven body. If people say, I don't want it to be a citizen-driven body, I want it to be folks with inside baseball. I want people who have inside knowledge. I want only people who are just insiders to be that Charter Commission, then that's the will of the chamber. But my goal is to be inviting to average citizens who want to be heard and have been excluded in the past for being heard. So that's my thoughts. Any other thoughts or ideas? Would you like us, Councilmember Stewart, quick question if I may? Would you like the city manager to draft a, because you talked about the nomination process, and I didn't want to exclude that idea if you wanted to include that idea?
I would like something to be included in there that if somebody leaves, how we're going to...
Okay. So how we replace that person?
How to replace that person, yes.
Yeah. And would you like to have one alternate or two alternates?
I mean, are we going the alternate route? I mean, is that...
Well, that was your idea.
Well, I'm saying, somebody suggested it to me. I didn't know what the rest of the council thought about that. I kind of thought, I didn't know if somebody, if that was actually a doable thing. I didn't know if they'd want to sit there. So I don't know. What does the rest of the council think about that?
You know, we're very open here because we've talked about the Charter a lot, and as a matter of fact, a significant number of the ideas, a significant number of the ideas that we've talked about have been ideas that you've brought to my attention and we've included them. The ranked choice voting, correct?
Yes.
And so, and you've had a number of ideas on this, and I want to listen, and so this is a point that if there, if somebody needs to offer that, I'd be happy to offer that and ask the city manager to have that ready to go when we in fact have it in city council meeting. So I just want to give you that opportunity.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I'm fine if there's a desire to have alternates, that's fine. I mean, that's fine.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. But one thought would be is that, you know, there will be people that are nominated that don't get voted on. In fact, in the last round, there will be people that aren't selected, so maybe we just have the next one that got the most votes be, you know, the alternate.
As an alternate?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Do you like that idea, Councilmember?
That works for me.
Would you be willing to be the champion of that cause?
I don't know what you mean by champion, but...
What I mean by be the person who, you know, asks the city manager or, you know, to start that process.
Sure. Mr. City Manager, would you...
Got it.
So, Councilmember, thank you. And I hope I didn't, my goal was not to catch you off guard. So, very good. All right. Anybody else? With no further discussion, we'll move on to item number two, discussion, resolution affirming the city councils adherence to certain provisions to the city personnel policies and procedures, as well the administrative policies of the City of Independence. So I know this was an interesting discussion point earlier and...
It's about to get more interesting.
And we've talked about this three or four times, which you always should when you're making policy. So anybody have any thoughts on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I have some questions.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir.
An easy one. Who wrote the resolution?
I did.
You did? Okay. Who does the chief human resources officer report to?
The finance director.
Okay. And the finance director reports to you?
The deputy city manager, who reports to me.
Eventually, everybody reports to you, right?
Yeah.
And then obviously you report to the city council, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you had any discussions with the chief human resources officer about this?
Generally, yeah.
Okay. So according to the Charter, we're not supposed to give direction to any of your staff. If this ordinance, if this resolution passes, would we be in violation of the Charter?
I would need a legal opinion, but I believe the purpose would be for the chief human resources officer to summarize the findings of an investigation and then provide that, not to make recommendations about any kind of discipline.
So if I'm hearing that correctly...
I want to know if, if this passes in itself and we're not supposed to give direction to any of employees that are under ZAC, would this be in itself a violation of the city Charter?
And if, for clarification purposes, Councilmember, could you expand upon that idea and help, could you give an example of that where it might in fact be a violation?
Well, this, just in this resolution period, we're given duties and responsibilities to this chief human resources officer. I just want to know if it'd be a violation of the Charter. I mean, if he needs to come back to it, I can go on with my questions.
I didn't hear the last part you said.
I mean, if I can go on to it, if he wants to look at it, I can go on with my questions if he needs more time.
Well, my question is, is understanding your perspective and your point of view, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're concerned that the human resource officer would be violating the Charter by giving a report?
No, we would be violating the Charter by giving him direction to do this or item, I'm not sure if it's a male or female.
Right. And, you know, collectively as a group, because, give me your scenario so I can understand where you're coming from. So let's say that elected official violates one provision of this, then could you proceed and give me your example of what that is?
No, my exa, I'm sorry. Maybe you're not understanding. My point is that we as a council will be given direction to this chief human resources officer to do this, and I just want to make sure that not in itself is a Charter violation.
Okay.
I mean, anyway, I'll go on to my...
Okay. No, no, that's a great question, and I just was, I just wanted to understand where you're going with it. So thank you.
Okay. I'll go on to my next question. If a complaint comes to be and there is discipline giving, what kind of discipline can be given? Because nothing's stated in the resolution.
And so are you asking the city manager that or...
I'm asking the city manager. What discipline can be given?
The council sets their own rules and governs the qualifications of its members, so the council would have to answer that question.
Okay. Well, I would, shouldn't that be, I would think that should be in the resolution, like what can, what could happen? Because right now it says nothing. And the personnel man, manual, it gives specific guidelines, you know? You're going to give a vertical recommend, you're going to get, you know, you're going to get written up, you're going to be terminated. It doesn't say anything what is, it doesn't state what can happen or what, that's my point. Then the other question is, if discipline, it does happen by the city council, is it by a simple majority or does it need a supermajority? Does the allegation or outcome stay private or public? And I have real concerns about that because of what we've seen in recent years, just an allegation, whether substantiated or not, can tarnish someone's reputation. So if somebody made an accusation against one of us, the city council investigated it, does it go public? Does it stay private? As I've said in previous city council meetings, if these changes need to be made, it should be done in the Charter. I adamantly disagree with the way we're doing this. I think this resolution is an attempt to subvert the Charter, and it does not even do a good job at it, since the city councillor has stated any provisions of this policy listed in the resolution that are inconsistent with the city Charter are unenforceable. So in my opinion, if this passes, it's really no more than feel-good legislation. That's all I have. Thank you.
What was the last part? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's no more than feel-good legislation because I just don't feel like it has any teeth to it.
Can I ask you, would you be willing to make recommendations on how we improve the teeth to it? Because I agree with you, there should be accountability to elected officials. I think they should be accountable to all provisions that all citizens and employees of the city have to follow as far as, as far as sexual harassment, as far as workplace violence, as far as, you know, hostile work environment. So what would you recommend that we do?
I'm not an attorney, and I don't pretend to be one.
Right.
But my suggestion would be we send it to our city councillor. We let him make the changes that fall in line with the city Charter if we're adamant about doing this. And, you know, I get where you're coming from, workplace harassment, you know, sexual harassment. I get all that.
Sure.
But, I mean, why are we putting in there that I need to take an AED class, you know, or show my driver's license or, I mean, there's just a whole list of stuff in there. It's like, why are we falling in line with those policies?
Okay.
So...
So there's...
That's what I think we should do.
Okay. So you want to kind of put this aside and have a discussion about this to make this better and have it have teeth?
And I want it to fall in line with the city Charter.
Okay. So I'm hearing you say...
If it's possible.
Right. Now, I'm hearing you say a number of things, I want to make sure I'm clear. So number one is, you'd like to see it have teeth?
If it's possible to the city Charter, yes.
Right. So we could get, we could get the city attorney to give us a recommendation on that? And then you would like to make sure that it falls in line with the Charter?
Right. Because he has stated that right now it could be unenforceable if it doesn't.
Right. And then I'm also hearing you say that you'd like to have clear steps, that if somebody violated this, that there'd be steps that, that this could be brought public and let people know that we're held accountable just like everybody else.
Well, my point was, if it was an unsubstantiated allegation...
Right.
I mean, it could run any of us.
Right.
So where's the due process? You know, is the city council it? The city council make that determination? Is there an appeal process? You know, where's our due process?
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is there's three...
I'm not saying this just for me, I'm saying it for all of us.
Oh, absolutely.
Because all of us, you know, there needs to be some protections in here.
Sure. And, and I think that's, you know, the United States was built on the idea of due process. You're innocent until proven guilty. And so I like the idea that you say they should have more teeth, if I'm hearing you correctly. Number two, we should make sure it's in... sure it's in compliance with the charter, if I'm hearing you correctly. And then, number three, there should be steps in due process if there were allegations, so that people have the right to defend themselves and protect their reputation.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Anyone else? Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I have a few things that I'd like to cover on this.
Sure.
Section five says that any alleged violations of the policies procedures listed in section one or two of this resolution will be summarized in a writ report by the chief human resources officer, presented to the city council for review and recommended course of action. This section is the most problematic to me of this resolution that purports to pla, to place elected council members under employee personnel and administrative rules. It creates a hybrid of elected council member merged into employee or appointed officer. And this is clearly not allowed by our charter. The charter provides for the council to make council rules, but not to superimpose employee or admin rules on the council. So, I submit the council could make rules that mirror the personal policies in specific adopted council rules for the city council, but then the full council would be able to comment or debate the content of each rule before adopting some on themselves or the same on themselves. The council would also have to develop the enforcement provisions with due process, privacy rights, and rights of, of appeal. So, and I, and I continue to ask to see what the revisions were being made when we had the governance meeting and the calls of doing so, haven't seen those yet. We do have article five of the city charter code of conduct and a board of ethics that has the power to investigate, hold hearings, and to issue opinions, findings, and adversary, or advisory recommendations. And the board of ethics also has the power to assign clerical, legal, and investigatory personnel as needed to review an alleged complaint of misconduct of a council member. So, to use a lower level employee of the city manager appointed by the city council to summarize any allegations of a violation of personal policies on its face presents a conflict.
Can I, can I interject?
Sure.
Just for, for clarification. So, what you're saying is, to make this resolution better, is to remove that section where we have a city employee doing this and insert possibly an independent investigator as a solution to make this resolution much better? Is what I'm hearing you say?
No, I'm saying that to take, take away this whole language of a hybrid council employee...
Right.
And, and put where the charter provides that the council creates its own rules and of, and then we live by those rules. We debate them, we discuss them, we agree upon those.
Isn't that what we're doing right now, though? I mean, we're...
No, we're, we're allowing...
How's this different?
Because we're, I, I've laid it out. We're, this is allowing a lower level city employee to essentially, uh, act outside the charter requirements, and, and it puts them in a bad situation, puts Zach in a bad situation, because he's in, he, he's the boss of this individual, but then we're the boss of Zach.
Okay.
It's, it's, to me, it's just convoluted, so...
Can I ask a follow-up question, if I may?
Sure.
And if you prefer that I not interrupt, I'll, I'll hold my thoughts.
I'd like, I'd like to get through this.
Okay, go right ahead.
We can do that.
I apologize.
Okay, that's fine. Um, to use a lower level employee of the city manager appointed by the city council to summarize any allegations of a violation of personal policies on its face presents a conflict, it improperly places subordinate officers in the position of participating in the disciplined process of those who have oversight of the city. And section five does not require the summary to be delivered in executive session, since it deals with infractions of a pers, of the personal policies, personnel policies. So, the process in section five does not provide for an independent and impartial investigation, due process for the council member so alleged, or the right of representation before the chief human resource officer. There's no provision for a right of privacy normally afforded a personnel matter, and is not clear who may bring a claim against an elected official to a lower level employee of the city. So, I submit the scan enforcement language needs greater thought and neutral construction. I believe the council should have a higher standard of conduct than is expected of employees, and I believe any complaint delivered fro, against a council member should be submitted to a neutral or external lawyer skilled in the areas of complaints against elected officials. At any rate, an allegation against a council should not be summarized by a non-attorney for repris, for presentation to the city council. This resolution does not explain in the preamble the problem the resolution is trying to address, and I submit this resolution is not complete, and it does not fit with the, the city charter. And if there is a problem, city conduct, of council conduct, and a need for a disciplinary process or structure, should be laid out before the charter review committee for deliberation and inclusion in any charter change recommendation. So, this resolution convolutes elected council members and employees not envisioned in the charter language, does not provide a proper enforcement mechanism, but rather improperly places employees in the process of disciplining their superior officers. So, I ask my fellow cons, council members to remand this issue to the charter review commission for their consideration. Let's do it the right way.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if, I, I'm sorry, if I could, I, I just think this is an important thing, so we're all playing with the same deck of cards here. In article one, section C of the personnel policies, and I, I called this up just so I make sure I get this right for everyone, it says that these personnel policies and procedures will be applicable to all employees in the classified and unclassified services, except as may be excluded herein. And then, in the charter, section 3.30, paragraph one, it defines who an unclassified employee is, that is, the city clerk, the management analyst, council members, and such other personnel as may be elected or appointed by the council, so my position included. So, the, the personnel policies and procedures right now, by definition, apply to the council. I, the, the discussion, I think, if I heard right, that you were having on the 21st was to, how to recognize that, and as you keep saying, put some teeth into it, so that if there are allegations of some misconduct between an elected official and a member of staff, how, how that's guided. But I just want to make sure we all have the same deck of cards, if that does, um, by definition, apply to, as we sit here today, the, the council as well.
Okay. So, to summarize, if I'm understanding your situation, your summary of that argument successfully from the charter is that it, it refers to an article one, employees that are, or excuse me, in 3.30, unclassified, uh, employees according to the charter. Would it be including yourself?
Yes, sir.
Is it the personnel policies, or is it the...
Pardon me, section 3.30, paragraph one of the charter.
Right.
Council members, the city clerk, the management analyst, and other personnel as may be elected or appointed by the council.
Okay. And...
Article 1C of the personnel policies and procedures states, these personnel policies and procedures will be applicable to all employees in the classified and unclassified services, except as may be provided, may be excluded herein.
Okay. So, what you're kind of saying is that it's already covered in the charter to a certain extent because they're unclassified, or am I misreading that?
Yes. Um, that, that applies today by definition of council members being in the unclassified service. These personnel policies and procedures are applicable to all employees in the classified and unclassified service.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Uh, very briefly, I, um, I'm not sure I understand this concept of a lower level employee. Uh, what I'm hearing is that certain council members don't want to be subject to the, the same rules as other people that get paychecks from the city. And I just find it curious that the HR director is a, somehow below us. I suppose that would also mean that interim chief dustman is also below us, and I'd just like to let him know right now that I will be driving however I want around this town, and I will not be subject to your opinions or input in your official capacity.
And let it be noted for the record that, uh, acting chief dustman has held up some handcuffs, just to make a point.
I, I appreciate that, chief. Um, I think my point's made. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just...
Go ahead.
Just a point of clarity.
Absolutely.
I did not say that I wasn't, that I, I wouldn't agree to this. I, I just don't agree with this process. So, if there, if we are under these policies already, then we have due process, and we have privacy rights, and we have the ability to appeal, and we, we have all these things. But they're not quite spelled out for the council, and I think, since we're all wanting to review the, the charter...
Mm-hmm.
This would be a great place to begin and put that in. I, and if we're going to be hybrid council, I'm telling you, this, we're on shaky ground. This could be used for good and evil...
Mm-hmm.
If we go there. So, uh, it's not that I'm opposed to it. I do not agree with that statement whatsoever. I have no problems with it, but as it's written, I do. And I think that we need to clarify it, and like I said, there is, in the, in the charter, there's the ability for the council to make council rules...
Mm-hmm.
Um, and hold a, a level of accountability there with a process and a procedure that's clearly spelled out, because obviously, it's not, or we wouldn't have all these questions about it, and that we would have spelled out what it is to have due process, privacy, and the ability to appeal any decision. And I think that having anybody in this city investigate, uh, is not how this should go. And, and you, you were eight years at the state. Are there specific statutes regarding elected officials' behavior at, at the state level?
There are, and, and I was, uh, witness to actually a governor being removed from office because of improprieties, and it was quite a process, and it actually took the legislature almost an entire, um, session to deal with those, those issues. Um, however, they're not in the constitution. They're procedures and processes that the legislature's defined and designed over time. I'd be happy to work with you, council member. I think you have a number of great suggestions here, and I think that this does need improvement. And I like your suggestions for improving it, and I'd love to work with you in greater detail to, to, to make that happen, because you've got some great suggestions here, and, but my, my point would be, um, you know, two things. Um, I'd love to work with you on it, to clarify it in greater detail, but also have a timeframe for when we do it. You know, we're going to do it. Uh, I'm, I'm opposed to putting this to the charter, because then what we're basically saying is, as elected officials, we're not going to be responsible to the will of the people for easily another 24 months. So, I would like us to draft regis, you know, items just like the legislature did, to say, this is how we're going to behave and be accountable to citizens, and not just be accountable at every four years election cycle.
Well, isn't this, isn't this have something in it that, that this is to be signed after the swearing in and the oath of an election? Is there language of that in there? I think so. So, this is two years out anyway.
Okay.
So, I don't know what the rush to it is. Let's get it right.
I think, this is my interpretation of section three, that at the time of the swearing in, each member of the city council will sign and acknowledge applicable policies, including, but not limited to, the workplace violence. I think you make a great point. We should make an amendment right here, that we would immediately be responsible to this when it's brought to our attention. So, um, that's, I think that's another excellent suggestion, and I think, uh, when someone is sworn in, that we should also make it evident when we do it right now. I don't know, just, I'm open for suggestions.
You're asking me to agree to all of it without getting all of these done?
No, 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 I want, I want, what I want you to agree to is that you and I will work on this to improve it.
When we have an agreement, uh, and we work through it, and we put in place, um, the, the policy, or the procedures...
Mm-hmm.
And the processes...
Right.
That this whole council agrees on...
Right.
Um, then, obviously, yes, we, the commitment will be there...
Mm-hmm.
But not until. I mean, I, I think we're, we're a long way from this being done.
So, let me ask you this, then, because, uh, you know, council member, I've worked with you, and I've also worked with a number of members in this body, and said, what ideas do you have to improve, uh, issues that we work on? So, my question to you is philosophically, are you in favor of elected officials being accountable to citizens, uh, in this processes? That's really the first question, the philosophical question, because anyone, when anyone negotiates anything in life, they have to start from a philosophical agreement that, yes, this is what we want to do. And my question is, are we at that point where we have a philosophical agreement that, yes, this needs to be done, or are we at a point where, no, this does not need to be done, we don't need to be accountable? I, I'm not sure which is the choice here.
I think I stated that I, I believe that we have a higher standard...
Okay.
...than city employees.
Right.
And I've stated that for two years.
And I agree with you.
And I've stated it many times for two years.
Right.
And I still believe that. And, but, but the way this is constructed...
Mm-hmm.
You're going to have to bring some privacy, some, uh, due process, and you're going to have to, uh, make sure that there's an appeal process.
I agree completely.
Because I can see this going down a bad road, too. So, um, I, I just...
Would you be willing to work with me to get to that point?
Absolutely. I think...
That's what we need to do.
Isn't that what we're doing in the study sessions now, is we're working through these?
Absolutely.
Okay, then, yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, anyone else? Other discussions or ideas on this particular one? That was just too robust for everyone, and they just wanted to stay clear of that? Was that it?
Just a thought, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, um, by the provisions that Mr. Walker just outlined in, um, in what he shared, I'm wondering if we should include in here a list of policies that we would not be held to. For example, the, the polit, the political, political action policy. Um, you know, that, that policy obviously shouldn't apply to us. Um, it, it can't, there's no way that we can, we can...
Run for office.
Run for office and fulfill that policy. No way to do that. So, that would be an example of, and, and maybe there are others that we should not be, um, so maybe we should list out those as well, you know, for, for listing the things that we are, you know, agreeing to. Uh, we should list the things that we're, you know, saying that we're not going to be held accountable to these.
Excellent point. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Council member, I'd love to get together with you and see how we can improve this, so, thank you. All right. Uh, moves us on to the next item on the agenda, and I put my agenda in side papers here, so if I could have you help me out. Oh, discovered, uh, discussion of outreach for unhomed or unhoused individuals. So, Mr. City Manager, would you like to address that, or get that started?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Um, I know, uh, discussion of outreach to unhoused individuals has been a important topic and discussion among the council for several years now, and increasing in frequency and intensity lately. So, I have asked a few of our department directors, whose departments have been most heavily involved in that, to speak with you tonight about what some of those outreach efforts look like. Um, I believe questions have been asked of us in the past, not only from a manpower standpoint, but also a budgetary standpoint. What kind of, um, uh, impact is this having on the organization? So, we're going to try to answer some of those questions tonight. And then, finally, um, as we stated in the cover sheet, um, you know, there is kind of a trade-off to, you know, when, when you're doing one activity, that means you're, you're not engaging in something else. So, the directors are going to kind of talk to you about competition for scarce resources, and though I don't think we're going to solve everything tonight, we were hoping to get some feel and guidance from the council about, uh, frequency and, and nature of these outreach efforts. So, I'm going to start by introducing Acting Chief Dustman, um, our municipal services director, Lisa Reynolds, and Parks Recreation Tourism Director, Morris Heide, have also contributed to this and are available here tonight as well.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Adam Dustman, interim chief of police, as Mr. Walker mentioned, um... As Mr. Walker mentioned, I can't thank enough Municipal Services Director Lisa Reynolds and Parks Recreation and Tourism Director Morris Heidey for their input. And they will come up and speak to the impacts from their perspective. But I wanted to kind of set the scene. Obviously, as Mr. Walker said, we need some council direction and some public expectation as it pertains to homelessness and unhoused individuals, those with housing insecurity in our community. It is no surprise that this has gone on the rise. And again, just to set the scene and give you some background, 10 years ago, we still had unhoused individuals, homeless individuals, in this community. What has happened in the last 10 years that is pretty profound is the availability of resources to provide to these individuals. Oftentimes, the police department 10 years ago would respond to these individuals in crisis and other instances, and we had no tools at our disposal, other than just enforcement means. That's all we had. Today, as we stand here, and I can show you, and I've sent to some on the council who have requested, every independent police officer, when they go out and deal with somebody in various stages of crisis, takes with them one of these resource sheets, which is an entire eight and a half by- or eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper that has resources from emergency shelters to agency assistance, housing assistance, hot meals, food pantries, you name it. It includes both faith-based and non-faith-based resources throughout our community, as well as the metro area, with phone numbers, hours, all sorts of things. So I tell you that to show you the progress that has been made in the last 10 years, both with the outreach and wraparound services provisions, as well as a change in strategy from the police department that starts with and always leads with care and compassion for these individuals. The difference in this population in our community today, 10 years later than it was 10 years ago, is we find ourselves more and more increasingly dealing with a transient population that does not want services or engagement, which, as we all know, homelessness, unhoused, housing insecurity, just like financial insecurity, there are multiple very complex layers to this, often not the least of which rooted in addiction and mental illness, something that are societally very complex and layered, multi-layered and multifaceted issues that we're not going to solve here tonight. Doesn't mean we're not going to continue to work towards those. But we have built those bridges with comprehensive mental health services, CSL, the Coalition and Homelessness, and our officers, both the community services unit of the police department as well as throughout the city, continue to engage with those individuals to try to work from, like I said, an area of care and compassion. And we will continue to do that. Fast forward to today, what we find is increasingly, we have complaints from residents to business owners and visitors for the amount of trash dumping, scavenged, or what I would, again, kind of going to the mental health side, hoarding-type behaviors of couches and anything you can think of. Shopping carts has been a hot topic for this city recently. And so we find these strewn about the city in pockets, and we get called to deal with those. Obviously, residents are fed up if that- those sites end up in their front yard or in the neighborhood park where they take their kids, often scattered with various items of drug paraphernalia, to include used needles, which are a safety hazard. So when this started becoming more and more of an issue, it was imperative on the police department to try to be proactive, again, leading with care and compassion. So at my direction, the Municipal Services Director and Parks Recreation and Tourism Director got together with our community service unit and started a homeless outreach and enforcement mechanism, again, starting with engaging in these services to start with. And for those that choose not to or are not in a place where they want to accept those services or engagement, we followed through with the enforcement side, which was they were posted with a notice prior to at these city-owned camps or county land or places that we have a memorandum of understanding with owners of that property that do not want trespassers on their property. And so we would post a notice, very large, and I have an example of one of them that I think you have in your packet, I believe, but I'll show you just for the sake. And I do apologize that the presentation's not here. We had some technical difficulties with that. But full-page notice that says, "On X date, we will be back," so there's no surprise, "and anyone that is here is going to be arrested for trespassing, and we're going to clean up this area." So we have done spot checks to identify those areas and those individuals, and we have reached agreements with our Municipal Services Department, as well as Parks Recreation and Tourism, that one day a week, each one of those departments will provide a crew to go in on the backside and clean up the area. Additionally, we had a supplemental resource with the school resource officers that have come in because they've been out of school, and we've been able to supplement our community services unit to go in and do some more outreach, some more pain handling enforcement around the businesses and other things where appropriate. And we've seen some positive effects from those efforts thus far. However, as Mr. Walker mentioned, when we get into scarcity of resources, our SROs are going to go back to school. They have a very important job to do, so that's going to limit those resources there. Consequently, as you'll hear from the Municipal Services Director, as well as the Parks Recreation and Tourism Director, this is where the expectation and the public education piece comes in. It may be 84 hours before a pothole gets filled, as opposed to 72 hours now, because that crew is off. From the park side, the grass may get mowed at four inches instead of three and a half inches if we have a wet and rainy season, or it may- it's also had weekend work that's been assigned. So there are benefit and cost to both. So what we are looking for from the council is that determination is, what is the city's priority? And where do we go? Is this an important effort that we need to dedicate these resources and thus the funding that goes along with those and the expectation of the reduction in services? Or is it- is this not that big of a priority and thus we should maintain our primary focus and come up with something else? To be determined. So that's kind of the background. Again, I'll defer to Lisa Reynolds first from Municipal Services to tell you the impact on Municipal Services. I will tell you from the police department's side, there is no impact, like you're going to hear from them right now, because we have the SROs that are there. There will be an impact past the summertime where they go back to school. We can still- we have our community services folks that are there on duty. There's no overtime that has been created by any of this from our side. So the funding and impact of that is negligible on the department from the police side.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As interim chief Dustman said, I'm Lisa Reynolds, Director of Municipal Services. And again, he kind of covered the impact our department. Basically, we are looking at about a 10% increase in time it takes us to address issues that come in for the streets division. For the bulk of the year, we've been staffed at about 75%. Currently, we're only staffed at about 60%. So on our best-case scenario, the most people we would have available to send to assist with these cleanups would be 10 people, and that would mean we had no one else left to deal with any streets issues. If we continue to participate in a once-a-week cleanup, we'd be looking, just like you said, at going to an 84-hour response time for a pothole repair instead of our current 72, and that 72 is up from our ideal of 48 following storm cleanups and staffing issues, to be honest. The other impact to the department is just simply the cost. That last event was $8,700 event, just on the Municipal Services side. That was for staff and disposal fees and equipment, fuel, things like that. So all totaled, we were looking at about $8,700. So I think the biggest piece for the department is just that understanding that if we do continue to participate, and obviously, this is a bigger issue than any of our single departments or staff to deal with, we are happy to do so, just we want to do that with the understanding that our response time will suffer for our traditional street-type repairs and responses. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
So 8,000 times 52 is $416,000. What would that do to your budget? Your manpower?
Well, we sent six people to the help of the last event, so if that only leaves four, that's- we can- we'd have one crew out basically doing major repairs or potholes. So take us down to a single crew for streets work. Budget-wise, obviously, that was not a total that would have been in any way programmed into that budget, so decimate might be an appropriate word. And then, so I will say, we are also, separate from this, also already spending about, between streets and stormwater, roughly $100,000 a year in just debris pickup. It's not necessarily all associated with the homeless cleanup efforts, just in general dumping as well. So we budget to cover that, because that we're already spending, but once it goes beyond that, we don't have it planned for.
One more thing, Director Reynolds. Independence doesn't have mandatory trash service to residences or commercial-
Correct.
-residences? If we were to set a policy that that became mandatory and passed an item, do you think that would affect the trash and reduce the workload on your side?
Oh, it would certainly affect that $100,000 that we're spending. Most of that is, like I said, large debris pickup. With the ARPA funds we have available, we did open a PO to have a contractor come do large debris pickup, but a lot of it, if just for customer service and response time, if it's not a huge bulky item or a massive cleanup, we're still doing a lot of that just in-house, just for a quick response.
Do most- do you know if other municipalities all require trash service?
Many do. Actually, every year that I do a utility rate update, most of them bill through their utilities, so have that discussion about annually with most of the municipalities around here. I think the only- most of them contract the service. I think Kansas City and Platte City might be the only, and I think Olathe, don't quote me on that, but I think, are the only three that actually have their own fleet and run it themselves, but otherwise, it's just contracted out and the city facilitates the contract.
Councilmember Hobart, not to get too far down that hole, but while Ms. Reynolds is up here, it may be worth noting, and she can speak more directly to it, but she shared with me that during our drop-off depot, which is of course seasonal, April to October, there's a number of people that use that as their refuse service, who store up refuse at their property and then between April and October, bring it to the drop-off depot, which, you know, is challenging for a lot of reasons. I know Councilmember Steinmeier talked about the public health, environmental hazard issues, but yeah, when you've got, you know, a couple of months' worth of refuse stored up and then, you know, whether it be some sort of rodent or other animal that tears into that, wind tends to blow that all over the city. But she- Lucy, if there's anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, well, a couple of things about drop-off depot. We did, a year or two ago, increase the fees associated with that to more effectively cover the cost. We're still not really covering the cost of it with user fees, but we did see a decline in the use of that service and an uptick in more pickup for staff. So yes, I think there absolutely a correlation between the two. Like I said, it's primarily streets and stormwater. So stormwater, we've got known locations in town that are using the creek as their trash service, and that's where our stormwater folks come in.
Just one more comment, actually, Mr. Walker. It would be my request, and of course, other councilpeople could chime in at this or any other time, but I'd like to see us put in place a program where we have mandatory trash service to all, you know, occupied, whatever the best practice is, residences and buildings, you know, commercial businesses, industry, whatever it is. I wouldn't mind seeing that go on landlords' bills, so that they have to be responsible, regardless of whether a tenant does it. Mr. Fears may not like that idea, but I would like to make this as mandatory as possible for folks, so.
That's something we can work on.
I'd appreciate that. And I'm guessing, Ms. Reynolds, you've put some thought into that?
Oh, absolutely. We, like I said, we discuss this annually when we do rate updates. And also, just side note, the deputy director of Municipal Services sits on a solid waste committee through Mid-America Regional Council, and he actually had just attended that and got the updated rate sheet for what the bulk of people are paying around town. And far and away, it makes it cheaper for- the most expensive one on there was Olathe, and that's them running their own show completely. But it was $10, $11 a month cheaper compared to what some of us just in the department pay. So it could be a benefit across the board.
Well, I'd like that. Anyway, that's all I have for-
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Director Reynolds, or I guess maybe to our city manager, taking that line of thought that Mr. Hobart was discussing, could- is this something that would fall in the purview of our Sustainability Commission to take a review and look at as well?
Yeah, we'd be happy, I mean, to take that back to that group. I mean, that's probably the most apropos group. I will tell you, a couple, three or four years ago, our management intern did a research project on this and went and looked at some of the historical files, and it's the same conversation dating back into the '60s and '70s, you know, a philosophical debate between those who think this is important to maintain the health and safety of the community and then those who kind of want that free will and free choice. And really, that's where this conversation stalled out the last time. We took that to Citizens Commission, and there really was not an appetite because of some of the strong emotions on both sides to bring it forward. So it would be a good place to take that, but I don't think, with all due respect, this is not a disparaging comment, the difference this time will just take political will, because the arguments and the information that will come from staff is not going to be new information.
Fair enough.
And Councilman Hobart, again, just for the substance of discussion, I think directly to your point, my goal would be that we don't do this 52 weeks out of the year. My goal would be that we get ahead of this and we get it cleaned up, and then we're done with that piece of it, and then it's just a matter of maintaining. So that would be the goal. I don't know how lofty that goal is, but I- that would be the hope, is that it wouldn't be budgetarily really, you know, an impact going forward. There is going to be some, but hopefully, that's a minimizing factor as we go forward. So, Mr. Heidey?
Let me ask a question to-
There's a question. Proceed.
Mr. Walker, is there- and correct me, I don't know. Is there an ordinance that already exists about rentals that they are required to have trash service? Is that part of the city ordinance?
I would need to do research to confirm that.
Could you do that, please?
Yes, sir.
Let me know. Thank you.
Mayor and members of the council, Morris Heidey, Director of Parks Recreation and Tourism. So first off, I wanted to thank interim chief Dustin and also Director Reynolds for their assistance with this challenge that we have. I chose to put in this slide, which unfortunately, you don't have in front of you, but not only to show the cost associated with these weekly cleanups that we've been having, but also to kind of show the average of the impact that we have as far as this unhoused cleanup costs. So if you refer back to that document, we're averaging eight employees a month, lists out the equipment and the fees for about a total of about $27,000 that we deal with on a monthly. This is records going back, you know, four or five years. This has just been an ongoing challenge for us. So when you do the math on that, we're well over $300,000 that we're dealing with annually as far as the impact of this that has on our parks. So greatly appreciate the assistance from the other departments trying to, you know, tackle this issue kind of with a new emphasis. The specific cleanup, we- so eight employees on average monthly, the specific cleanup, we actually chose to increase that to 12 employees. It's about half of our staff, our maintenance staff. So with the impact of that, we're having to, obviously, with park rentals, different activities, programs, events going on the parks, we can't just not mow. Interim chief Dustin mentioned about, you know, maybe the grass is slightly higher, but our goal obviously is to maintain that level of mowing and park cleanup that we can continue to have situations where citizens can be in our parks and rent- we can continue to have situations where citizens can be in our parks and rent, rent our facilities, et cetera. So our option really, thankfully however, the, the, other than today with the rain, it's started, the grass has started to, to slow down. That'll kick in gear again with the rain that we've had, but we've had to shift to weekend overtime work to make up the slack for this day, you know, one day carving out for these cleanups. So, that's been the overall impact for us. So, later in the fall, wintertime, springtime, you know, that's not such an issue for us when we're not doing the heavy mowing that we're doing this time of year, but currently that's really our only option as far as, you know, reallocating resources at this time, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Proceed.
I think your teams do a great job in coming behind and getting things cleaned up. Unfortunately, staying on top of it and staying ahead of it, as you, I think you said, is the real challenge in our city. I mean, we've, we see that it's an expense that we've got to figure out, and your manpower works really hard, and I've seen them when I've been out in the rain, in the mud, up to their knees, doing things that a lot of people would just can't imagine doing in a day in their job. So I commend your teams, and I hope, Mr. Walker, I appreciate you allowing me the privilege to ride and see our, our parks team and coming in behind and doing some incredibly dirty nasty work. And they do it, and they, they do it quickly and efficiently, so. I, I, I need you to tell me again what your park cleanup cost this year is?
So, referring to this slide, we're averaging about twenty-seven, a little over, almost twenty-eight thousand dollars a month. That's just our regular ongoing, and this is based off the last several years' average costs, so.
Is that timed seven months, or?
No, that's, that's twelve months a year.
Twelve months a year?
So, you do the math, that's about three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I wonder if we have any idea what our business cleanups are? Has anybody ever talked about that? What are small businesses, or medium-sized businesses, or large businesses, they, what their expense is in cleaning up? I, I know that we can't, we can't just be sympathetic to the, to the city cost and, and how we're expending a lot of money that comes right out of your budget, how do you prepare for it every year, but also in the business costs and our residents' costs. I have people, this, this is the one thing that I get called more than anything, is, is our homeless population. Can I ask questions? Is that okay, Mr. or Chief Desmond? We've had conversations about chronic, when I go out and ride, what, at what point, you know, does someone who hits the streets today become chronic and just said, this is as good as it's going to get, I just, this is what I want to, this is how I'm just going to live? Have we, are we any closer to that answer?
I think it varies. Based on the population, I will tell you, as I mentioned beginning, we're, we're seeing a more transient population. That is their choice, that is their way of life, as opposed to someone who is necessarily that, you had that population ten years ago.
Right.
It's grown today. What has reduced, and the difference between ten years ago, is that population of those that were victims of circumstance, life challenges, hardships, economic downturn, you name it. And like I mentioned, there weren't the resources that were in place, the structure and the resources to be able to provide those services. We have provided those services, not us at PD, but as a community and on a broader scale of Metro, and Mid-America Regional Council is involved in those efforts, as, you know, you, you name it, those resources are there. So that, that section or subsection of this population has largely had several success stories that have come out of that, and so it is reduced, and we're finding that we have a population that is largely more entrenched and transient by nature, by choice. And again, there are some other factors that are underlying there that makes this a more complex issue, which is the mental health side. Is it really a choice if they, you know, if they're suffering from something where they don't, they don't know? So, there, we will always engage in that, obviously, and try to pair them up with the resources that are appropriate for them. To your previous point and question about the business costs, yes, it varies by location, but we've had businesses that have paid as much as twenty thousand dollars to clear brush and underbrush out of their own businesses, not at the city's expense. Obviously, there's a toll on their business population if there's aggressive activity that would affect their patrons or their employees. So there definitely is several factors that would, that would affect the business community as well as the residential community, as well as the visiting community.
Yeah, I, I worry about, you know, that we, it's, first of all, let me just commend you and your teams that every time I've ever been out, I've never heard any officer not lead out with, what can we do to help you? That's always the first question, and, and that sets the stage for, we're here to serve you, we want to, we have resources, we can do, we can, we can help you do a lot of things if you'll just give us that opportunity. What I, what I, what I'm always shocked at is about eighty percent of them that say, no thanks, I'm good, you know? And, and I've been working with homeless since nineteen eighty-nine, so I can tell you, it's changed, and I've been to twenty-six countries and served a lot of homeless and lots of deep poverty. I have noticed big changes in, in the struggles we have. We have lots of mental health issues, we have lots of addiction issues, we have the, the environmental issues that just, your teams have taken me places that I'd rather forget, and seeing under bridges that people hike over and bike over every day, that, these are hidden little locations that have, I think I stopped car, stopped counting at thirty grocery carts that were underneath there, that your team will end up cleaning up. Not only is that, was it just so environmentally damaged in a beautiful location, happened to be in my district, but it was also a dangerous type of cleanup because of how the bridge was set up and the water and the rocks and all the things that go on with it. So, I worry about the liabilities of our city staff working on these places, and we, and then, you know, if we clean it up today, how long is it before we see them move back in and the, and the debris's there again?
It's, it depends, location by location, obviously. I can tell you that if we do not clean it up, we have found empirically, they are back within hours of, because our method of enforcement, just to kind of set the tone, this is not some round them up, take them out of the city and we're never going to see from, you know, or hear from them again. That is not, that's not the case. It is just putting in an effort as another tool in the toolbox for consequence for your action, which gives us the opportunity to come in and, and conduct that cleanup. It is a far longer period of time if we clean these areas up, just because it takes a while to amass this stuff, and, and I do apologize for the, the presentation, but if you go back and look in the presentation, there is a very, and this is a small, small sampling of, of the condition and state of the, the encampments that we have. I, I mentioned to Councilman Hobart, I don't know if it was two weeks ago or when, but the, the, we were, I was told by the cleanup that was, happened at Roberts Park, that we just cleaned up what was visible from the street to the tree line, and, and there's an estimation, and that was, I believe, eighteen dump truck loads, maybe eighteen, but eight, we'll go with eight, the lower number. There are a hundred dump truck loads at least that are behind the tree line all through, and you're talking, I mean, everything that you can see in these pictures, from tarps to tents to couches to TVs to, I mean, all sorts of things.
I've seen sporting good equipment from youth.
Yep.
Football helmets, shoulder pads.
Sure. It's no secret, I mean, we've talked about, they, they go to, and the sad part is that it's a vicious cycle. You have, you have, I've said this before and I will say this again, this community is overwhelmingly benevolent and compassionate and caring. You have people that go out of their way to take care of the rest of this community. Your public servants are no, no exception to that. But, you know, when we have donated items that go to Salvation Armies and go to, oh, Red Racks and all those places, you know, the disabled American veterans, all great causes, when they're left out there, you have these individuals that are, that are in times of crisis and or desperation, and so they do what any human being would do in a time of crisis or desperation, they find what it is to, the means to survive. So, they're going to take those items and then they all end up here, and, and that's what we're left with. So, it just, it, it becomes a compounding problem, and just, again, to clarify from Director Heidi, I, I just want to make sure that it's clear that twenty-seven thousand dollars that he's referencing is not the enforcement hybrid that we're talking about. That is normal park cleanup on a yearly, on a monthly basis, over the course of a year, going backwards. That's not this effort to clean up. So that would be in addition to, you know, these efforts, but it's, that's an ongoing cost and expense. So the hope would be that we could get this all cleaned up and, and, you know, and then hopefully those expenses would go down as well. So hopefully there's a benefit there.
Can we talk just a second about some of the, the crime issues that we've had, not just stealing or whatnot? Because I, again, I get calls, I have residents that tell me that if we can't get this under control, they're going to move. They're at that point, and I hate to see that happen or hear that happen. I've had businesses that have told me the same thing, because the cost, we're losing a business, as a matter of fact, and I think the tax revenue loss is in excess of between eight and nine hundred thousand dollars, and they're just moving simply over to Kansas City. And that's going to happen soon, so that's a big hit to the city revenue. I, I'm going to ask you just a few, because I've, I've had these reported to me. One, the most recent one was that we had a couple of homeless gentlemen decide they're going to take a bath in a swimming pool, and the children come out and found them that morning naked in the pools. Have you heard that, or did you deal with that?
I am aware of that incident, I'm not, I'm not aware of their clothing status at the time, but there was an incident where a mother came out and found two individuals in her swimming pool in the morning.
Okay. What about a stabbing of a father that was trying, trying to be between the homeless individual and the, and the, and his child? Is that?
Also sadly true.
Okay. What about a lady who was handing something out of her window, being benevolent, compassionate, and she ended up being grabbed and out, thrown out of her car, and they carjacked her?
Yes, also true, a true incident, and I'm glad, in part, that you brought that up. I don't want to alarm the public, and, and I want to make sure that we're using this in the proper context, because this is a city of a hundred and twenty-three thousand people, most of which are fine, wonderful, law-abiding citizens, and so I want to make sure that we have that in context. However, it's a good point that I, I will stress my other message and plea to the community from a public safety standpoint, which is, we have these organizations that are set up to outreach and that are set up to provide to these individuals, and they are, they have structure and they have funding. Some of it's governmental funding, some of it's private partner, partnerships, and, you know, and then they're, the two come together for public-private partnerships. From a standpoint of public safety, I would ask the citizens to refrain from, both from a traffic hazard as well as just a public safety, refrain from giving any sort of a direct donation outside of a window. If you would like to, and please do, continue to support, if you are able to, these efforts, find those organizations that are set up and structured to do so, and that way there is not the, the opportunity for, to become a victim of a crime if one exists.
I'm not trying to alarm anybody either, but I don't think that we should just not say things.
No.
The, the citizen of our city need to be wise. I would prefer that they take the donations to the groups that are working the streets and actively serving the homeless population. I'm okay with that. I just want them to be aware of it. I, I only say that because my eighty-two-year-old mother said to me the other night, well, they approached me in the parking lot, what do I do? And, and she wants to be helpful, but I tell her, just get in your car, and, and let's not, because it's, give to your church and do the right thing, so. But I worry about her safety and welfare, as I should, so, and, but not because she's my mother, but for all seniors, all people that, that are moving about her city. So, I do appreciate your time, I thank you. When you go to, one more meeting, when you go to, I know you do a lot of neighborhood meetings, what, what do they tell you? Just to be honest with us, are they, what's the general message?
I'm always honest with the councilmen. They, I've, I've been to several, between community groups as well as residents, and this is a topic of primary concern at all of them, from the, the business community as well as the, the residential community. And so they're looking for some direction. Again, they understand that we're strapped on resources, we're strapped on staffing, we're strapped on budgeted funds, thus why we're trying to come together to, to address, to use the words of Mayor Rowland, you know, to address the problem while continuing to work to engage on, on solutions. And we will continue to do that at City Manager Walker's suggestion. We have engaged with Mid-America Regional Council, and they're going to have a consultant come out and interview stakeholders and try to solve this on a broader scale, because we know that some of this population is cyclical from community to community. So we need to, right now, again, from my opinion, we need to take care of independence, but we're still going to engage on the metros, and we will be great partners in that as we go forward. So, look forward to that going forward, but that is why we're here tonight.
One more question, Mr. Walker. Does IFD have a resource officer that's actively out working with homelessness as well?
The Council heard the presentation from John Burrell a few months ago. We are in a pilot program with that right now, and hoping to report some results to Council soon, so nowhere near the resources we want, but we do have that, that pilot program up and running. Yes, sir?
I thought I, I thought that that was something that was mentioned, but I would like to hear an update from him as well.
Sir.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Mr. Mayor, so what I hear is, I hear the question you mean to ask the Council of, are we comfortable with, you know, delaying responses for street maintenance with longer grass to be able to address this issue? You know, I hear you asking that question, I'm just going to respond, yes, I'm comfortable with those delays, I don't like them, it's not what I want to do, but I think we have to address this homeless issue. At the same time, we do that, I would like to hope that as a community, we could form some sort of a coalition or some group of people that would include, you know, people from the police department, but also people from community services organizations, from church organizations, from other folks that, that, you know, deal with the, this population on a regular basis, to provide us with some direct and some recommendations on how to best deal with this issue in our community. We don't like it, and I'm also comfortable with addressing the, the mandatory garbage issue, or whatever it takes to, to, to help clean our community up, you know? I, I think that's something that we probably, you know, I, I think, in my particular neighborhood, we have garbage trucks that run through our neighborhood every day of the week except for one. And, and, you know, and that, the, you know, I don't know if there's ever been a study done on the, the maintenance issue that causes on the streets, but it has to impact when you have those big vehicles running over the streets. You know, what if we just took the same number of houses and divided it up among those current trash companies and said, go do it, you know? And, and everybody has to have it, so let's, let's divide and conquer in the same way that we currently have. I, I'm sure there are other issues involved in doing that, that, that I'm not thinking of, but, but I'm certainly comfortable with dealing with those kind of issues as well. But I think we, just back to the homeless issue itself, I am, am really, would be really supportive of some type of a coalition or group, and it could involve, you know, maybe some neighboring communities, but certainly should involve those types of people in our community that could help us, give us some actual recommendations. We heard last week from, in the, in the forum about Houston, Texas, that's reduced its, its homeless population by fifty percent. Well, if we could reduce our homeless population by fifty percent, we probably wouldn't be hearing so much about it, you know? And so, anything we can do to that degree, I think we ought to try to do. And so anything we can do to that degree, I think we ought to try to do. If we need to take specific action, Mr. City Manager, to put together that kind of a committee or something to that effect, then, then I'd like to know that. But if it can be done outside of action on the council part, I think we ought to do that too, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I like your, I like your thoughts there, Councilman Fears, because I was going to suggest that, well, let me back up here. I love your thoughts. Where we're, we're going here, I'm with, in agreement with Councilman Fears, we've got to take this action with cleanup and hopefully with, when we do these initial cleanups, coming back through won't be as, as time-consuming and cost-deficient there. We have a bunch of agencies that are in this town already. Burrell, who merged in with Comprehensive, they're in our, our community now. CSL, just realized today that Heartland Behavioral Health, they're now have an outreach team. Gosh, probably three or four months ago, three months ago, Councilman Hobart, myself and, and the city manager and the gentleman from Kansas City who leads the outreach team there, I cannot recall his name. We had a great Zoom meeting talking about just low-level problems that we're seeing here in Independence, but, and also Marquette from greater Kansas City to homelessness. I mean, so we've had these really good table discussions. So it's time, I believe, and I'd be more than happy to lead that, that, that group to try to pull them together. Let's find out who's actually getting out and doing the outreach. From what I'm hearing, and I say outreach, I'm not talking about our other great groups, hands and feet of Jesus, who's getting out there, who's feeding, kind of talking to these groups, but I'm talking about building that relationship, because building that relationship's important. Having that wraparound services ready to go when those people are wanting to take that next step, that's what we've got to have. We have these groups in here that I hope are doing it. I know some of these groups are getting federal funds doing this. Pathway Fund is the one that comes to my mind. I know a lot of them are receiving that state grant money, federal grant money. Like to see how they are actually implementing that and working with that. So in short, Councilman Hobart, would you be willing to, just help spearhead this with me, since you and I know a lot of the same people have had these same conversations, and start this group, bring them in, let's see where we're at, at a good point in time and kind of branch out from there? I would be more than happy to do that.
Sounds great.
So thank you for all your input and information and everything you're doing.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Steinmeier, Fears and Perkins. It's really nice to know that we all are passionate and care about this issue. Mr. Walker, I'm going to make a personal plea to your subordinate, so I hope you're not offended or don't file a charter violation on me. Chief Dustman, we've talked at length about these issues, and because you're the guy with the badge and the gun, and you're also fairly well leading the department discussion on this, a big, a big, huge part of what we've been lacking in addressing the houseless and homeless problem is a leader. Now, I'm not nominating you for anything, but my personal plea is this. We do have more qualified, educated, professionally-trained folks doing outreach now than, than we even did at this time last year. Councilmember Perkins mentioned Behavioral and Comprehensive, both have teams. So here's my request for you. I'm not trying to tell you how to police or do your business in any way. If it makes sense and, and you can find the value in it with your own judgment, I'd like to see you coordinate with those folks even just a little bit, so that folks that they're in outreach with, they're in services with, that they are in contact with, that they can be prepared and sort of protect those folks, help those folks, so that they can be just a little bit a part of the process, so that when you come across folks that have issues that other folks are working with, that they have a chance to, to pull, pull them out before they get, you know, cleaned up or moved on. I, I understand the value of both, but certainly I have seen cases, thanks to a lot of the folks John and I know, certainly his wife Annika, who's also here and really knows this issue. Sometimes at, an event, the wrong contact with the wrong person at the wrong time can set folks back, especially a mentally ill person. It can set them back for months or years, and they won't trust anybody again to talk to. Now, you're not responsible for that, but if you can help with it, I would, I would sure appreciate that.
Agreed, Councilman, on all fronts. We're doing that a little bit already with Burrell and the Rapid Crisis Center that's coming up, and then hopefully the larger facility that's on its heels. Hopefully there's some technology that can help us with that. We have two Comprehensive co-responders that are on staff in PD already, so we will coordinate those, and I couldn't agree with you more. The last thing we want is a setback. Yes, we're not responsible for it, but we absolutely are sympathetic to that.
I appreciate that. And by the way, Mr. Walker, all, all, all thank yous should go to your staff. I don't know that 10 years ago, this city would have had three different department directors working together toward a common goal, damn the cost, damn, damn the effort, so to speak. It's really encouraging when you look at the next 10 years for Independence, that we have bright, young directors that are willing to, to compromise what the book says and just go out and get the work done. So I really appreciate that. That's really helping the residents.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Please proceed.
Okay. Mr. Walker, I'll address this to you. Are you aware that Truman East, you know, it used to be that people were, that were living on the streets or in, at that poverty threshold could go and get services and weren't charged for it? Now they're being charged for it. Is that correct?
I've, I've heard that, yes, sir.
Yeah, we had a, a nice lady that we dealt with for about an hour and a half in, in the parking lot of E's that obviously had some mental issues. She was, she was struggling and then she had the sundowners. So as the sun went down, she just went into her cycle. But the one thing she told us, and we, and AMR showed up and she refused because she owed Truman $14,000 and had no ability to pay it, and she wasn't going to go rack up more bills. This is, this is, to me, a serious issue that needs to be addressed. And I, I know you, I know you deal with Mark. I would like to hear their response to, the explanation for it and what we can do to resolve that. Because if you have a, a, a community that, obviously they know their needs and struggles, if they have no place to go, guess where they're not going to go? And they're not going to seek help. And, and that, that is, that's on us, folks. That's, that's, that's not a good reflection of, of our county, and I, I don't know when that changed, but she, and, and our officers knew her. She had lived in a flop house, she'd been beaten severely, one eye was damaged, but she, and she was not going to go to that hospital because she couldn't pay the bill. And, and we wrestled with that, my wife and I, after that encounter. And I, I just think, what, what, what have we come to? I thought we had medical issues like this figured out in our country. But apparently, we're back to what it was, was before. So if you can get some answers on that, I would, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And if I can make one more in the interest of time, and then I'll stop, I promise, but I am obviously passionate about this. I, I think I would be remiss if we also didn't take the opportunity while we're talking about mental illness to plug the 988 National Suicide Prevention Hotline. That is, and through Mark and others across the country. Mental health, as we know, is a real deal. It's here, and many, many people across our community struggle with that. So if you are struggling with that, there are resources to help, please, please, please reach out to someone. That 988 number, someone will answer that phone.
And Veteran Services as well.
Absolutely.
And if I could chime in also on the unhoused issue. The importance here is there's got to be wraparound services, and I know many of my councilmembers have said that too, but the important issue is here is this. People who are unhoused or homeless, depending on the word you want to choose, they have a mindset. Some of them have a mindset that's a poverty mindset. You and I sitting in this room have a middle-class mindset. Some of us in the room may have a wealth mindset. But until you change mindsets, you don't change behavior. And just reaching out and feeding people does not change mindsets. All it does is perpetuate that mindset. And if you want to have real change in organization, real change in the city, we've got to help them change their mindset. So anyway, thank you. I appreciate your time, and thank all of you for your presentation. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our Boards and Commissions Report.
We have a few boards and commissions that we're looking for recommendation to add resolutions to the next agenda. The first is the Truman Memorial Scholarship Fund Candidate Selection Committee. Recommendations have been made to reappoint Jim Blau and Robie Matthews. If there's no objection, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda. All right. PUAB, Councilmember Stewart has recommended appointing Michael Talcott. If there's no objection, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda.
Can I ask a question there? Councilmember Stewart, could we add an alternate just in case they weren't able to serve? I'm just teasing. Thank you, my friend, for the indulging that. Please forgive me.
It's okay. Brandon Dependence, Councilmember Fears has recommended appointing Jeff McLaughlin. If there's no objection, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda. City Judicial Commission, City Manager Walker has recommended reappointing Libeta Jada. If there's no objection, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda. Tree Commission, Mayor Rowland has recommended reappointing Darla Eames. If there's no objection, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda. Land Trust of Jackson County, Mayor Rowland is recommending to appoint Brent Shondelmeyer. If there's no objection, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda. And we have some additional discussion topics. Mayor's Advisory Committee on the Arts, and I don't know if you want to talk about this now, Mayor Rowland, or if we want to wait, but we had a meeting recently, the city manager, the mayor and myself, regarding some of the boards and commissions and consolidation and dissolving certain boards and commissions. The two committees here for additional discussion are the Mayor's Advisory Committee on the Arts and the Transportation Policy Committee. If there's no objections, we can get resolutions to move those forward, to dissolve those two committees.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Frankly, what I'd sort of like to see, because I, I don't know if we have to have a global overview, or if we can pick out two or three or four at a time, but I'd like to know a little bit about what they do before we squel, you know, dissolve them or consolidate them or something like that. But if there's a handful that we can turn two or three into one, maybe a couple of clumps like that, that would be good.
I, I would definitely be happy to work with the clerk to bring that. I, I will, just for the council's benefit, the request regarding the Advisory Commission on the Arts came from that commission. They would like to pursue their own standalone 501(c)(3) status, separate and apart from the city. I think they feel like they've graduated and ready to go take on the world and all that, so.
Didn't realize that? In that case, I'd be all for a resolution. If they're grown up, then let's kick them out of the nest.
Anything else?
Just a question on the, on the Transportation Policy Committee. Don't we have, I thought that Councilmember Hobart, Councilmember Perkins, maybe someone else is on a transportation committee already? Is that this committee or is that a different committee?
That's this committee.
So, so is that the only committee we have that deals with transportation?
To my knowledge, yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Fears, that committee, and it predates my time at the city, but there was a, a period of time where the city of Independence had broke away from the Kansas City Area Transportation Authority and was operating our own independent bus service, IndyBus. So this committee made a lot of policy decisions about routes and times and fares, and now we have since gone back to working with and under the auspices of the KC ATA. So we let the professionals handle that again. This committee has met some when talking about, like, for example, the Truman Connect, the bike trail, but really their original scope and purpose has been eliminated with the merger back with ATA.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Any other discussion? See no other discussion? Any other discussion topics?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I'm, mentioned to my, my fellow councilmembers and mayor that, you know, I, I spearheaded the, the request for a proposal from the Staywell Committee and at their, if, if they neglected to do that, then from the city manager relative to the Staywell Healthcare Fund. My understanding is that that committee met today and, and made some recommendations. My, my request of the council would be that instead of that coming forward next week in the form of a, of a resolution, that we have a study session about that on the 8th of August to discuss the impact of the Staywell Committee on our budget. You know, it's, it's over a $20 million issue for our budget, and so it's, it's not insignificant in any way, shape or form. I think it warrants the time for us to discuss the Staywell Committee, I'm not Committee, the Staywell Fund and the proposal relative to that, not only for this budget year, but for the next two or three, four budget years if we can, so that we aren't having to just Band-Aid approach this every year. We just, seems to me like it's always an issue that comes up every year. I would really like to see us address this in some way that, you know, we get a solution for multiple years and, and kind of plan ahead on that. So without, if there's not an objection, I would like to request from my fellow councilmembers that we had a, had that on study session on the 8th, and then, then we can come back with the resolution on the 15th, if that, if that doesn't cause problems for you, Mr. City Manager.
No, that, that would probably give us time to digest and process the feedback from the committee today to, to get their recommendation put together for the council, and then any additional information that staff may or may not need to bring forward. I think we, we could probably be better prepared to have that conversation, would appreciate the, the extra time.
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Perfectly, I think, well within the rules to request a study session, but we really shouldn't discuss it much because it's not on our agenda. But I would certainly, study session is fine. We'll, when, when the meeting time comes, we'll have to vote then and shouldn't discuss it now about whether to continue it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. I have got a simple statement here. Some news agencies ran some stories tonight at 5:00 and 6:00 about our fine city. As I said last week, I'm outright outraged, I am outraged at the overtime issue. We are awaiting recommendations from the city manager in response to the findings that were presented just seven days ago. As the presentation from the special counsel found, these practices that were going on have been happening for decades. The city manager is working closely with the executive team and myself to develop a comprehensive set of recommendations and actions to ensure that this does not occur again. The attorney's notes were provided to a very limited group of people, and it has been It contains attorney-client privileged information and confidential personnel files. Today, we are once again faced with those working for the status quo. Those who would rather expose our city to increased legal liability to move their own agenda forward. This will not stand. Putting your individual needs and ones before those of our residents, this will not stand. Because of this action, we now have to prepare to pay further legal cost, as opposed to working on solutions and moving our city forward. This person has chosen to take a different approach. When I ran for mayor, I was fighting the status quo. I ran to focus on making our parks better, maintaining our roads, making our community safer, working on homelessness. But this person has chosen to work against that, and now those resources will have to be used to defend this action, your tax dollars. This is not the city I know, nor is it the city I want us to be. When information is leaked, our employees can't trust us. Our employees cannot trust us to come forward to fix problems. With that, this meeting is adjourned.